A study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for Monday, April the 21st, 2025. We have three study items on our agenda tonight. Item number one is Jeffco Economic Development Corporation update. Item number two is a procurement policy and guideline update. And item number three is council's vision and mission statements. And this is the time that we normally open the meeting up for public comment. And I have no one signed up to speak today, so I will go on to our first item. This is a Jefferson Economic Development Corporation update. Madam Deputy Manager.
Thank you. I wasn't sure what my title was going to be this evening. Thank you so much.
You should give me a good kudos on that.
Thank you. I'll turn it right over to our economic development manager, Steve Art, to introduce our guests.
Thank you. And I realize we are holding you between the Nuggets game and the Avalanche game tonight, so we'll keep this nice and quick this evening. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Jansen Tidmore. Jansen is the CEO of the Jefferson Economic Development Corporation, of which we and all other municipalities in Jeffco are members of. And for the most part, Jeffco is the marketing arm of this community outside of Wheat Ridge and Jefferson County. So they're going to shows and marketing Wheat Ridge and Jefferson County out of the state, out of the country. I'm certainly sure Jansen will mention that. I also want to mention too that you're council rep on Jefferson County Economic Development Committee, which we call Jeffco EDC, is Janice Hoppy. And Janice, I'm not sure if you want to add anything to that this evening? All right, with that, Jansen, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Fantastic. Thanks for having me this evening. So I would like to start off with a little bit. That kicked me out. Yeah, won't take long to get back on 3947. Perfect. I like to start off with a little bit about me because when we talk about economic development, what we're really talking about is community development. And each of us view our community in a unique way based on, quite frankly, what is our own bias. I'm a dad to a 16 and a 12-year-old, Jeffco Public Schools. And so I talk often that when I talk economic development and community, it's through the lens of a dad with some kiddos that are looking for opportunities and future opportunities. And so I'm in my fifth year here at Jefferson County. I'm born and raised in Dothan, Alabama, and did my studies in Auburn and came out here right middle of the pandemic in May of 2020. And since that time, Jeffco EDC has probably taken a much different light than some of you who maybe were involved in years past. And I'm going to talk about each of these different entities to a little bit, but I wanted you to kind of see all of the different brands and partnerships and collaboratives that fall under the EDC umbrella. And I do call it an umbrella because for many of these things, we aren't the owners of them. We just help power and we help administer them because it takes our community partners, it takes our county, it takes our cities, it takes our higher education institutions. But what we've been able to build in a common thread that you're here tonight is that if you're a business and you're creating jobs, we wanted to make it more simple and more streamlined to get the help you need when you need it. So I'm going to start off with Jeffco EDC. What is an EDC? It is the Economic Development Corporation. It is charged with the attraction, retention, expansion of primary employers. But let's start off first with the board structure for those that aren't as familiar with it. We have a 35-member board that contains all three county commissioners and six officials, six elected officials from the six cities. So Westminster, Wheat Ridge, Arvada, Lakewood, Edgewater, and Golden all have a representative, nine elected officials on the board. Our Jeffco Public School K through 12 superintendent, the president of our community college, the chief of staff for School of Mines, the president of our local foundation, both hospital CEOs, and another 20 business leaders. Why do I talk about that and why is that important? It is the only place in Jefferson County where that collective comes together around one table. And we come around that table with the belief that the cornerstone to a healthy community is access to quality jobs. And we're wanting to create and maintain those jobs. And so that gets back to the heart of what we do as the Economic Development Corporation, and that is attract, retain, and expand primary employers. There's two types of employers out there, primary and consumer-based. Your primary jobs, I'm going to go a little bit deeper into those, but think manufacturing, aerospace. Consumer-based, why we don't really attract on the consumer side is that when you provide primary employment and when you provide those salaries, that's what your consumer-based businesses are chasing and following. So in fact, what we are doing is creating those same consumer-based businesses by giving them a clientele and a population that will shop and buy there. A little bit about the state and region flow, because we get this quite a bit. When you're looking at the state of Colorado, there's a lot of hands in the economic development partnership range. There's OEDIT, which is our state, the Office of Economic Development International Trade. There's Metro Denver EDC that represents 11 counties. And then you get down to the level that Jeffco EDC is at representing, and then our city and our county partners. The flow of many projects starts at OEDIT and works its way down. And what we try to do and why the EDC represents the county in all six cities is that we, quite frankly, are agnostic on where they come to Jefferson County. We want to make sure that they have the talent and that they have the space and availability of the product. And we know that working collaboratively and together helps all of us versus trying to compete within our own boundaries there. So what does that look like? Announced projects in 2024, you can kind of see down here our different years, but I'm going to concentrate on 2024. Last year, we brought in $705 million in new investment. Now, that's projects that we worked on. That can be the real estate, that could be the capital investment in equipment and machinery as well. But what that rounded out was nearly $5 billion in new capital over the last five years. It's a lot of money. To put that into context, the previous 16 years, which is how far our data goes back, was about $260 million. $260 up against that $5 billion. It's been quite a run for the EDC. Jobs created out of that, 2,168 jobs created in 2024, bringing our running tally to about 10,000 jobs. Again, I go back to what we're really here for, and that's to create and retain those jobs. And then square feet absorbed on that as well. What's kind of the makeup of that? So out of that money, out of that $700 million that we brought in, that came because we worked 114 different projects. We know that it's a numbers game. If you want to land 15, 20 different projects a year, you better be working 90 to 100 or 120. 114 was the largest single amount of projects worked in any one calendar year since we were tracking that data since 2002. I'm going to tell you, we may break that in 2025. We're already up to about 60 projects this year, which is far outpacing what you normally would. Of that 114, 87 came in during the calendar year. As you all know, projects take time. So we usually carry projects over one, two, three years. 87 of the 114, that's a tremendously high number of net new projects looking in 2024. And you can see that attraction and that expansion breakdown, 92 to 22. One of the questions, and I'll stop right there, is that we all forget about what happens for the companies that exist today. Because we talk a lot about the companies that are coming in. Never let our numbers around attraction in these conversations mean that the most important jobs aren't the ones that exist today. In fact, in 2022, our board was very kind to us and let us take a lot of our grant money to fund a position called a Director of Existing Industry. And if you've had a chance to meet David Carroll, we have a whole role and function that does nothing but go out and meet with existing industry and say, "How are you? How can I help you?" It is the most important thing that we can do. It's also one of the things that probably has the least amount of metrics around it, which means you have to have a board and you have to have investors that are comfortable with the notion that you won't directly see the return on it, but it's there and it's critically important. Our retention efforts are now talking with over 200 businesses each and every year. Our visits have ticked up, and what's starting to happen is that our expansion projects are ticking up from that as well. That used to be in single digits, and now we're consistently seeing that in double digits. I can tell you, when I first hired for that position, I had, I told him, I said, "You've got the simplest job description, yet the hardest task." And they're like, "What do you mean?" Well, they didn't believe that how many doors are going to slam. Because when you actually knock on a door and say, "Hey, I'm just here to talk to you," people are skeptical. Businesses are skeptical. What do you really want? What do you need? And for that reason, they don't sell investment in the EDC. They don't talk about any of our programs. They're just there to talk to the business, and that has taken time to say, "I promise, I really don't want anything, just to help you." And we're really starting to see the fruits of that labor. I know it's probably pretty small for you all, and I'm going to send this whole slide to Steve, and he can distribute it to you all. Everything in here is for public consumption. You can see the types of projects that we're working on on the bottom. Heavy, heavy on advanced manufacturing, heavy on energy, and then you're seeing the rest kind of spread out. Advanced manufacturing is one that oftentimes, I'm going to go into some of these slides, that people are often confused about. What is it? Well, for us, it's a lot of engineering-intensive manufacturing. These are extremely high-wage jobs, 133, that are covering the spectrum, but usually mean that there's some type of product that we're creating, manufacturing and building here. Something that probably has heavy machining or ceramics like Coors Tech or one of these different things. One of the Wheat Ridge's still had composites that's doing amazing stuff around carbon fiber. These are across the spectrum of the type of companies are, but they're building products that are going all across the globe. And quite frankly, in Jeffco's case, down to the bottom of the sea and up into space as well. You can see the job growth in this has really been tracking well. And on this slide, because I'm going to show you quite a few of these slides, a couple key metrics. You can see the sector at the top, the number of jobs that are in Jefferson County for that sector, the average wage of those jobs. Job multiplier means how many jobs are created in other sectors or supply chain. It doesn't really delineate or differentiate. So that could be retail and restaurant, that could be supply chain, could be somewhere in between there. And then location quotient is an industry number that means what your national benchmark is. This particular 1.98, that means we're at 98% of the national average, 2% on that density. And that's marking the number of jobs versus the number that are eligible in our workforce. So just kind of to know how to work through these slides here, I'm going to show you quite a bit more. Next is aerospace, our highest by average wage, 179.3, 12,000 jobs. We're often competing back and forth to be about number one or number two. We're currently number two in the state for job density in aerospace. Colorado Springs is currently sitting at number one. But it's one of those things that these are the companies that can start off as a million-dollar revenue and be 100 million overnight. You can go from a dozen employees to hundreds of employees overnight. This is one of our biggest and highest-growth industries, and you can see 4.6. Again, that means that we have 460% greater density than the average city in aerospace. Number three, aviation. Some love it, some hate it, but we have a county-owned airport, Rocky Mountain Metro Airport up to the north. And for me, it's a great asset. I really like our airport. I'm chair of the board for the airport. So it's something that's near and dear to me. What I love about our airport is how much industrial and job-creating land we have. If you hadn't been up there to Pilatus, it's one of those opportunities that some of our groups get to go and see and how they're building this aircraft. But we just opened up another 180 acres up there. And if we really want to focus on job-creating industries to go on that 180 acres there. And so you'll see these numbers across the board are probably a little lower than some of our others. But because of the site and because we know of that acreage that's opened up, it's one of those target sectors for us. Beverage production, of course, you can't think of Jefferson County and Colorado without thinking of beverage production. And we continue to be at least a steady in growth rate. You can see the projections we're putting negative. We still feel like that's going to level out with some of the investments that have happened around that. They weren't job creators, but they were job preservers. Where we were seeing those jobs slip, we've been able to maintain some careers. What normally surprises people the most on this is the wage. Because sometimes when you think of this industry, you may think of a lower wage. This is not a low wage. These are great, high-paying jobs that have quite the career continuum on them. You can start off, earn your way up, build your career, and there's a lot of steps along the way that exists there. Bioscience. Your first thought normally goes to pharma here. That's not what we are. We are medical device manufacturing. In fact, we're number one in the state for medical device manufacturing jobs, great-paying jobs that are on here. Of course, one of the other ones that we didn't put up there is Tarumo BCT. That's another one. These are high-paying jobs. There's R&amp;D, there's manufacturing, there's engineering, and then there's also the clinicals that come out of this. It's a great mechanism for our hospitals that are here and a great testing ground for primary healthcare all throughout our community. And there's the medical device manufacturing. So this is a breakout and a subsector within that bioscience that you can see there. Energy. When most people think Colorado and energy, they think oil and gas. That's not the case for Jefferson County. While it is the number-one amount of jobs that we have in energy, a great high wage, one of the largest job multipliers, I'm going to go to the next. The bulk of that is in clean tech. Of course, everyone knows about NREL, the National Renewable Energy Lab. That's about 3,000 of those jobs. But to think that NREL and the amount of focus and R&amp;D we're putting on that, for the 3,000 jobs that NREL has, there's another 10,000, bringing us to 13,000 jobs happening in clean tech. One of the things that we're still very hopeful for is Globe Park that's been announced. That's the Global Energy Park. It's going to bring NREL more out into the public and with other industries and other companies that can tap into those great labs without having to be onsite that's there. Red. This is one of our newest ones, and we love the term red, research, design, and engineering. And you'll hear this common thread between because what Jeffco is most rich in is engineers. If you believe that engineering is the new MBA, you can know why we have so much demand for industry here. Because we've got over 43,000 engineers that call Jefferson County home, and we're producing more every day with our school systems. Red is kind of one of those catchalls of all the engineering that's not already called in here, but it's heavy on research, it's heavy on design, it's great annual jobs, and it's critical to our entrepreneurial ecosystem. These are those jobs that are, again, are starting with the one person and an idea that become 10, that become 20, that become 100 very, very quickly. And then the last of our sectors is IT and telecom. This is one that really surprised us. Coming in 2021, we redid all of our target sectors. IT and telecom had never hit the radar of Jeffco EDC. And really, quite frankly, when I was doing my tours and looking here, it would have never hit my radar as well. But when you started to see everyone work from home and you started having those conversations, you realized how much of Jefferson County already worked from home. And they were working in IT and telecom, and they were doing this far before the pandemic ever hit. And so those 24,000 jobs are scattered, and they're all throughout. And quite frankly, many of those don't mean that they have a chroming glass building or a big sign, because these are individuals that choose to be here. Jefferson County is one of the leaders in the state, good, bad, or indifferent, depending on how you feel about this for remote workers. In fact, the last thing that we saw, which just came out about a month ago, says that 26% of the workforce of Jefferson County is classified as a remote worker. You compare that with the state of Colorado, 20%, and I think we're still trying to wrap our head around whether that's a good thing, a great thing, maybe something in between. We're not real sure what those impacts mean, but what we know is that when you have a choice on where you can live, more times than not, you want to call a place like Jefferson County home. I show these sectors so that you kind of understand when we talk about primary employment. It's going to boot me every five minutes. Let's go back. That's what it is. I don't blame you. 4328. You got me on a timer. I don't blame you a bit. But one of the core things that we did around all these sectors was that we have to all be honest about the fact that Jefferson County and all of our communities, it's not a housing problem, it is a housing crisis. I co-chaired the Jeffco Housing Continuum Task Force, which looked at the county and the cities and around housing. I served with Mayor Starker on the Colorado Gives Foundation, the workforce housing. Housing is a part of my daily conversation because it has to be. Because you want to have great employment opportunities, and those great employees have to have a place that they call home. And when we rebuilt this, we said, "If we start attracting companies that have to import talent, that have to bring people from somewhere else to fill these jobs, we're doing that company and our community a disservice." And we built every one of these sectors that I just showed you around the talent that exists in Jefferson County today. There's about 270, 280,000 jobs out there. There's 330,000 people in our workforce. And we said, "We want to match that workforce with the jobs we create." And so we take a lot of pride and attention to these sectors, and we always like to talk about that. Because take, for example, the Quantum Campus that was recently announced. People are saying, "Oh, my goodness, you're going to bring 10,000 more people in here to those jobs?" No, 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 no. We're filling 10,000 Jeffco residents or 5,000 or whatever the number ends up being. We've got opportunities for the people that live here today. There's still that delta, 50,000 jobs, the number in our workforce. And I think we're being very intentional and cognizant of the fact, we want to create jobs for the residents that are here today. So I'm going to keep moving. Next on my list here, we're very happy that two years ago, we brought the Jeffco SBDC Network to Jefferson County. At the time, the BRC had rolled away. We actually share territories. For those that aren't familiar with the SBDC, that's the Small Business Development Center. It's a federal grant that flows through our state. Our state then has 13 centers throughout. Denver and Jefferson County share one of those centers. At the time when we started this, and with my great city partners, they were serving around 70 or 80 Jeffco businesses a year. We were a single percentage point of the total businesses served. We said, "We want to do something more. We want to create steady office hours. We want to create more of a program, and we want to give these businesses a better opportunity." SBDC consulting is free for small businesses. You get one-on-one consulting, you get to meet with experts, you get matched up. This 2024, we are now up to 540 businesses served in Jefferson County. 540 businesses that are getting thousands of hours of counseling for free to make sure that their small business has an opportunity to grow. We're going through some changes with our SBDC. It lost its host city. Steve's been at the table working with us to make sure that we preserve this. There's a lot of opportunity to maintain this, and we think it's critically important. Because I just talked a lot about bigger businesses and primary employers, but I'm going to tell you, our small businesses, our restaurants, our retails, when you think about a community and a brand identity, those are the companies you think about. And you're going to see that thread of, "We want them to be successful, and we want to have programs and opportunities that every single business can serve, all these great primary employers we're bringing in." The SBDC is one of those critical components for us to do that. Next on our list is Slingshot, Accelerating Jeffco Entrepreneurs. Again, this common thread of, one of the things that I did early on was take a barometer and an understanding of all the different programs that exist. The hope was, okay, let's find where the gaps are and fill it. When I was looking at entrepreneurs, which I separate entrepreneur and small businesses, these are a little bit higher-scale companies. They really start the same way as all small businesses, but they may have an idea or a product that's going to go to manufacturing and end up more as a primary employer. I found that we had a tremendous number of assets out there for entrepreneurs, and none of them talked and none of them connected. And so our city partners, our partners in higher education said, "You know, a unified brand, if we could create something that allowed you on-ramps and off-ramps at the same place and location, that would be huge." And so we launched Jeffco Slingshot. It's a brand that, yes, has some semblance and some colors the same as us, but it's neutral intentionally. It's neutral so that anyone can use this, so that any entrepreneur can come back here and just get connected direct with the resources they gave. If they're in Wheat Ridge, there's Wheat Ridge connections. If you're in Jeffco, there's Jeffco and beyond and state and so on. And if you just don't know what you need, you get connected with David Carroll in our office and say, "Hey, here's some resources we have." I talk often about the fact that we make a really good switchboard. We are not experts. We don't pretend to be. We're not going to work with every business. We do not have your answer. What we do really well, the switchboard you to this someone that does. And one of the key ways for that is that you can't bring egos or really who gets the credit for that. It's, we want businesses to be successful, and every one of our partners, our city, our county, our higher education feel that same way. And we've been able to build a lot of great partnerships through that. The next one that we did through that was the Jeffco Talent Collaborative. Last year, I'm going to talk a little bit about the pickle, which is one of the things that we do through leadership. But we saw that workforce was a buzzword. Workforce had a lot of money coming from a lot of different places. And yet our workforce components and teams often found themselves competing for those funds and not working together for those funds. And so this started when we went to Detroit. We saw what they had done around workforce. And so this is myself and the Arvada Chamber, Jeffco Workforce Center, Red Rocks Community College, Jeffco Public Schools, and School of Mines. We said, "The core entities, once a quarter, we're going to get together, and we're going to talk about the workforce programs that are being pitched to us, and we're going to find out where it should live." And the key that we said is that we're no longer going to say no, we're going to say yes if. Because we understand that your funding can't do X, Y, Z. But if you had that funding, what could you do? And we're going to stop piecemealing workforce programs, and we're going to put them where they should go, and we're all going to rally around that and support it so that they can have the outcomes we want, rather than just chasing dollars that maybe do or don't have those intended outcomes. This has been wildly successful for us because, again, those heads who had the best of intentions but never had the chance to really get around the table are now meeting once a quarter. And they're building relationships, and they're building bonds, and we're having better outcomes that are coming from that. Landon, and who's our new Red Rocks, our president, who's absolutely outstanding, and Kimberly with Jeffco Public Schools, and Kat Douglas with our county. Again, we were fragmented. We're bringing that back together. Jeffco EDC, we're just the administrator. We're providing them a chance and an opportunity to get around that table. And I'm going to open up to questions after this because I think what this rounds out is, one of the big things that we did when we brought the chamber and leadership under us was that we opened ourselves up to have these broader community conversations. Conversations that each of you are all welcome to come to, that you all hope find value in. And what we're really wanting to do is make sure that we're humanizing complex topics. Leadership Jeffco, we have our traditional class. We have our alumni association. We're proud to say that the youth leadership that went away two years ago, we've been running a test model the last two years. And this year, starting in the fall, it'll go to all 17 high schools. All 17 high schools are being invited to participate back in there. A chance for high school juniors to understand the opportunities in their backyard. The pickle that I referenced earlier, the peer community leadership exchange, was a chance for us to go learn from other communities. To say, "Hey, you know, last year we went to Detroit, we taught workforce and we taught public-private partnership. We've gone and talked housing and homelessness and entrepreneurship. Tell us the good and the bad and the ugly. We see your success now. We know it was hard to get there. Tell us your gritty stories. Tell us the ugly. Tell us how you had to roll up your sleeves and tell us how you almost quit." And what the most important thing that's happening is that 25 to 30 cross-section leaders from for-profit, nonprofit, and government are spending two days together, breakfast, lunch, and dinner, having conversation and building relationships and learning. And we have your undivided attention. It's very easy to have these meetings and to go home and to move on with work. For those two days, we've got your undivided attention, and that's been fantastic. I'll close on Jeffco Matters. We're still in a pilot mode on this, but each of our communities, because there's going to be opportunities with Colorado Gives Foundation to expand this. We started seeing neighborhoods that we knew traditionally don't engage. If we were to take the entrepreneurial approach, which they were doing with InnovateX at the School of Mines, if we take that same entrepreneurial approach and go into a neighborhood, can we get them to engage? Can we get them to work through challenges with us? We spearheaded this on South Golden Road at the Mobile Home Park across from Globe Parks going. And it was a rough few months when we really kicked that off. And we're now one year in, and I can tell you, somewhere around month three or four, we got our foot in the door. We were able to get some trust and show that we're there for good intentions. And now that community's meeting every other week in our office, having pizza and talking about issues. And one of the things, which we built it this way intentionally, was that we may go in with some preconceived notions of what the needs were, but we want to be able to pivot and respond based on what the community tells us. And what we thought, I think of our list of 10 potential needs, it wasn't any of those needs. What we found ended up being the real challenge or concern of that community, had to do with their natural gas and the fact that they're considered a pipeline operator and how they're going to keep power to their homes. We've been able to bring in Excel. We've been able to bring in NREL. We've been able to put a program to wrap around this neighborhood. And I think what's most important, and we're talking about, is now we have a community that's engaged, a community that hasn't engaged in a long time, and how we can scale that same model to it. So I've talked a lot. I want to open up for questions. There's some great ways to follow up. But for many of you, I've gotten to meet several of you. There's some I haven't got to spend a lot of time with. I wanted to give you an update of the EDC and what Janice has been working hard with the song, what Steve's been working hard, and maybe introduce or reintroduce you to our programs, our why and how we go about it. But I'm happy to answer questions you all have.
Terrific. We'll start with, thank you very much, Jansen. It was a great, great presentation. Mayor Potem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Councilor Hoppy, for serving on the EDC board. Jansen, great presentation. Love what you guys are doing. My question, I guess, is a little bit more Wheat Ridge-centered, and how much involvement or interaction do you have with our chamber, business association, Local Works? I know, I think I met you at the Makerspace at one point, but maybe talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, great, great question. So Page and Local Works is a great partner of ours. We work quite a bit with Local Works and big fans of what they're working on. The Business Association and the Chamber, we're definitely friendly and partner. Our West Metro Chamber will do some joint events and so on. We are very cognizant because we do have a chamber under us, a chamber that largely focuses on Lakewood, Edgewater, and South Jeffco, but technically goes across this broad spectrum, not to ever infringe or try to overstep in territories where there is a Chamber of Commerce. So there's probably a little bit of intentional separation there, but always a willing partner, always talking with them about government advocacy and what we're doing on that side of the equation. And then, quite frankly, when Local Works invites us in, she always invites the Business Association and the Wheat Ridge Chamber. So I would consider them partners for sure. I would consider them allies, someone that we work well with, but always making sure that we're not overstepping our boundaries there.
Is there a way, we've kind of recently redone our economic development plan and getting our Chamber Business Association working. Is there a way that they can get more involved with the EDC at all, or is there any more resource?
So the answer is always yes. I think it's understanding how and where they want to get involved. And I'll take our personal example around our chamber. We're finding ways to blend the EDC and the chamber a little bit more. But quite frankly, so much of what our chamber members want is polar opposite of what our EDC wants. And so to say that we're always willing to have those conversations, absolutely. But we know our lane in the EDC. we know our lane in the EDC. And even, I call it intentionally siloed under our own umbrella, like I keep our different verticals intentionally siloed and on their mission and try to find overlap, but it's, I can tell you from our experience, there's very few things that truly overlap. But we are all ears, we're always a willing partner to come to the table and we're very clear on where our lanes are and aren't. So if there's a desire to bridge some of that, we're definitely willing to have those conversations.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilor Hoppe and Janson. I have a, I guess, a question and what a great presentation, there's so much that I don't know, a lot of good being done, but one question I'll ask you is, have you, whatever some themes are engagement, learning the stories from other places and getting some of these communities connected together, have you ever considered something bigger, an event where we could have council members from all over Jeffco County, perhaps county commissioners, come together with the private industries to ask them questions, you know, how did they get things to work? You know, so there's elected officials asking questions to these companies and then taking that information and then, you know, learning from it and then passing it, something like that. And then as a bonus, I heard you talking about affordable housing, that's when we would, you know, have tables or whatever and you could use that to raise funds and this would be an event for affordable housing. So this would be a pretty big event that might only happen once a year, is that something that's?
Not in that format, but I'd certainly be open to it. I will say, I think one of the things that our current board chair has done, which is Tony Geratano with First Bank, is that our board meetings have really become what you're talking about, where we're leaving a lot of time, because again, there's nine elected officials on our board and then a roundout of others of just open conversation. And it has been wildly successful in just how deep and reframing some very complex topics. And that's been a good change that we may not have to tell you, this too, has made more people want to come to the meetings. We're not having people that are missing as many meetings because you don't want to miss the conversation. And so I think it's happening on a small scale, I'd be all ears to talk about what that looks like on a bigger scale, but I think we've got a few opportunities on a small scale. Our Board of Governors that we host every other month is something that you all are welcome and invited to come to, you know, this past year we had RTD there and I can tell you, RTD got tough questions largely from our city partners and I think it was worthwhile question. You know, so I think we provide quite a few chances to have that, but there's probably a chance always to expand and make that bigger. One of our biggest challenges is communication and how we talk and get the message out there when you don't have a big budget to market yourselves, a lot of that's done through our newsletters and other items. So if you're not subscribing to our newsletter, I highly recommend that, we do post about some of those opportunities, but I'd welcome the conversation about a broader or bigger program around that.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And Janson, you did mention your connection with the universities and the community colleges. What sort of feedback do you hear from them and what sort of feedback do you give them that supports all this?
Yeah, great question. So on our board is Peter Han for School of Mines, on our board is Landon Parius, which is the president of Red Rocks Community College. We also keep in close contact with Brent Finch from RMCAD, Rocky Mountain College of Art Design, and Dr. Eric Hoag for CCU. So those are our higher education institutions. I can tell you, we're great partners with all of them, we definitely do probably the most with Red Rocks, I do serve on the President's Board of Advisors and I'm a big, big believer that so much of your workforce conversation should flow through your community college. And one of the things that Landon and Matt Sweeney, if you've had a chance to meet him, is the new dean of workforce, it's taken me a little bit to get it to where I wanted it to go, and it's not just me, it's many, is that the emphasis and value around industry certificates, they're critical to this new conversation. And everything doesn't have to be a two and four-year degree. You're able to get certificates and you're able to work through and then you're able to make a career continuum that makes sense and is affordable. And one of the largest challenges that has been how our state views certificates as not success under the metrics of community colleges. And so one of the things that I'm a big believer in is that if you have a problem like that, doesn't mean that we should just start looking at four-year degrees, we need to go fix that problem. And we've got leadership there that agrees with us and is willing to take the risk on the front end on certificates and build that up and take some of those hits that they're getting on what is a metric of success and still building out two-year and then a couple of four-year programs. But a huge, huge success in how we're reframing the conversation around industry certificates. School of Mines, I think what we've probably really seen and have supported, what they're doing around entrepreneurship with the Beck Venture Center, what they're doing around quantum, what they're doing with Jeffco Public Schools and Red Rocks for those feeder programs, they're a great community partner and they're at the table, they're putting their dollars up at the table and we're invited and definitely a part of those conversations as well.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Janson. Really appreciate the presentation, really great, just broad overview of what the Jeffco EDC has transformed into. And I really appreciated being a part of this year's Leadership Jeffco class. I think it's given me a behind-the-scenes look at all of the industries that I didn't even realize were in our backyard. So I think it's a wonderful point to inform and educate the public as to what it is we do have to offer here and have that homegrown. I mean, my son wants to be an engineer, go to the Colorado School of Mines and like in this program, I go home and talk to him about all of these endless opportunities that are in the community that he's growing up in. So really appreciate that and I wanted to kind of, I have two questions and they're totally different, but one is in regard to the workforce and the work that you're doing not only through leader, like the youth leadership, but that workforce as far as, as you said, kind of Red Rocks and maybe Warren Tech and like how you're building that out to like that pipeline of from education, high schools to whatever it is that they would like to go to in as a career.
Yeah, so Jeffco Public Schools and so Superintendent Dorlan serves on our board as well. And I think it's coming up in May, maybe it's next week, one of her presentations around High School Reimagined. And this is a big deal. This is a big deal because what they've been doing is they've been putting the time and effort around the data and the backend to say, we've got to think differently about high school as well. And it's going to be a big shift on what we as a community and parents think about high school, but it's critical to reimagine, to rethink the processes about the workforce of the future. And I think that that feeder program and the results of that, and I think there's a public invite out there, if it's not, there will be some coming up, participate and give your voice. I think it's been a little bit, I don't want to say disheartening, but some of the early conversations have not had as many people around the table that should be taking stock of this and watching this because there is a desire and there is an eagerness to have that response that you're talking about. And I think one of the key is how do you make career pathways more affordable? I've got a sixteen-year-old, we're having this conversation, I am not allowing you to go into massive debt for something you can't pay off in ten years or twenty, like we have to talk about that, what we call the money pathway that the youth leadership's doing. What is the money pathway to the careers that are out there? And I do think we have the partners at the table. We have a ton of data, we have a ton of facts, we support in that way, but this is again why I talk about that switchboard, it's our partners and making sure that we're supporting them in those efforts. And that is something that is happening and happening soon for our public school system and is a massive conversation that I'd invite all of you to be a part of.
Thank you. And my other question was in regard to just that policy advocacy part and advocating on the part of the small businesses and businesses in general and kind of what it is that you do, you know, those tangible things and like do you talk to municipalities about regulations that are, you know, preventing and I guess minimizing that growth?
Yeah, great, great question. So we've got two primary committees for the Jeffco EDC. One is called Develop Jeffco and you all are not invited to that one because it's no public sector on that one. It's all about local land use zoning and planning and local policies. And so it's intentionally blocked out to our public sector because you may end up, maybe one of the cases is coming before you. And so it has stood up to be there, to be able to respond to local policy, usually more around development, land use, energy policies, those kinds of things, but it is a very active and engaged group. And you know, the fact that you all haven't had a lot of letters for us is a testament to how good your staff's doing. So that's probably a good thing. You know, our second major committee is our Government Affairs Committee, which is handling state and federal policies. It's also very active and it's also really working hard to build stronger relationships with our legislators. Those that know me know that I hate that we take more opposed positions than we take support. I wish we could take more support positions. Last year was the first year that we took fifty percent support, fifty percent opposed. That was fantastic. But look, business is under attack and I'm going to, I say this early and often, most policy is well-intended and is trying to fix something, but that doesn't mean that it's not misguided, doesn't mean that it's not going to have unintended consequences. And I think that's what we try to bring to the table, it's like, tell me what you hope to accomplish and let us see if we can help get that to a more workable state. So much policy just adds more burden. And again, it is our small businesses. And I'll go back to a little bit on the chamber talk, I continue to want our chamber to get more engaged in policy and advocacy and they continually tell me they have no interest in it, but they continually are the ones that get hit the hardest with it. And so if you only have the bigger firms, if you only have the bigger employers that are paying attention, it probably feels slanted like ours. And I feel it, that our small business voice continues to wane and gets smaller and smaller. It's not for lack of trying and making sure that we're not waving a flag and saying, please pay attention to this, it's just that they're so busy in their day-to-day that they just can't even wrap their head around getting engaged in that conversation.
Thank you. Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Ms. Marion, thank you, Janson, for coming and speaking with everybody. One thing I did just want to highlight too is if you look at in a macro level, like what kinds of things does the EDC do for Wheat Ridge specifically, right? It's, we can go to Janson and be like, what are you hearing? What are the needs out there in the light industrial, this size square footage, right? That kind of thing, which is part of one of the reasons why it was important when we were doing our prosperity plan was to make sure that we were kind of retaining the very small area of light industrial that we have, right? And so those kinds of conversations help get into our planning documents into the city that help set us up for, somebody comes, they say, I need light industrial, this many square footage, Janson's like, okay, let me get you hooked up with Steve, go look at Wheat Ridge, right, that kind of thing. So that's kind of like on a very macro level, how it comes into our community specifically. And then another thing that I just wanted to mention is, or I guess just specify a little bit more is, you know, we're working with, having the schools at the table, in the room, with the employers and with the elected officials, there's really important things when a large industry is getting ready to move in, then Red Rocks can pivot immediately and start making sure that they're putting classes on the books so that our students that are graduating out of Red Rocks in the next year or two are going and getting those jobs. So, you know, I think it's, I think that I find the EDC to be very important to our community and not a lot of people know, you know, about it and they don't really, you know, don't really know what they're actually doing for Wheat Ridge, but there is a lot of work that we're doing for our community specifically to help strengthen it and for the future leadership in our community. So, thank you, Janson.
Thank you. Councilor Holte.
Thank you. The couple of questions I had, I think, were basically addressed, but I just wanted to share, my son graduated a year ago from Lakewood High School and did two years' worth of Warren Tech programming and graduated with a whole bunch of professional certificates and college credit. But what he talked about the most while he was in there is that it wasn't just that he was doing the hands-on learning and getting those certifications, it's that all along the way he was coming home and not talking about what he learned, but what he could do with it. And he was really cognizant of like the industries and the jobs that were close to home for him. And his best friend, who also graduated, is starting at Red Rocks and also talked a lot about just understanding like the access to jobs in our community. So I just want to underscore the importance of that type of convening and collaboration and working together. And then I just really want to speak to and recognize a couple of things you said around, you know, housing isn't a problem, but a crisis. And, you know, I hope Wheat Ridge is being a good partner and trying to address that so we can continue to be a great place to live, but also a great place to work or anchor yourself if you're working in the district. And then also just the importance of the really relationship-building, programmatic approach you're taking to this across the board. I think it's one of the things that makes Jefferson County really unique and your story about the South Golden Road community, I think, is really exemplary of the kind of thing that all of us could be doing more of and it's exciting to hear it's happening there. And having hard conversations, I think we have a lot more of those ahead of us. And so knowing that there's strong partners, you know, regional partners and county partners that are really like cultivating that practice is going to really service as it gets a little bit more uncertain on the future and what some of these employment sectors look like. And so I just am across the board appreciative and impressed and really proud that we're part of this. So thank you and thank you, Councilmember Hoppe, for all you've done.
Thank you. Janson had a question here, what do you think are the three or four greatest challenges that we have and your group faces developing their economic strategy in the county?
Yeah, I mean, I mentioned earlier on, we say that the two biggest factors are talent and product. And when I say product, that's buildings. And it's increasingly more challenging to get buildings out of the ground and, I mean, we are limited on resources, resources being land, water, sewer and electrical, if you're not following what's happening out there. That's a big challenge and I think even on how we're talking from a cities and a county, like you all have acknowledged this in your housing and other studies, is what Wheat Ridge does impacts Lakewood, what Lakewood does impacts Golden and so on and so on. And I think we're really trying to be more cognizant of what our regional approach to land, land use and preserving spaces for that. I mean, we're getting close to not having any more buildings left and we run at one of the highest occupancy rates of the whole state consistently. And so that's challenge number one. Challenge number two is housing pricing. I mean, I don't shy away from that. If you've heard me, you've probably heard me say it many times, if I was to look at this job today, I'd be hard-pressed at the housing prices than what it was five years ago to move here. And I think that's why you've seen us concentrate so much on the talent that exists today, the dynamic to locate here is tough. And I worry for our future generations on homeownership and we've got a really strong YP, young professionals and having those conversations of where some of ours are that are in their late twenties and early thirties, I don't envy that. I think that's probably number two. And number three, I'll go to, it's getting excited and engaged in the work that's happening, whether it's Jeffco Public Schools or Red Rocks, we need more to show up around the table. You definitely have the familiar faces that hop table to table and I know it's so hard to engage and it's such a big area, but we definitely need to see more around those tables for conversation.
Well, thank you very much. Any additional questions from council? I know this is a very engaging conversation, I think you guys are doing a lot of great work in the county and actually throughout the state, so keep it up and thanks for coming and seeing us. I appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Janson.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve. Okay, we are going to go to our agenda item number two. This is a discussion on our procurement policy and guidelines update. Deputy Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Wow, that was great. That was great. Well, Whitney's just getting connected, I'll introduce her. So it's my pleasure to introduce you this evening to Whitney Mugford Smith. Whitney is the city's procurement manager. You've seen her occasionally in the background here at council meetings, she comes in case you might have any questions about carryovers or some certain contracts, but Whitney is one of those superheroes in our world who works very hard behind the scenes. She works to ensure that our public's funds are put to their highest and best use. And this evening, she's here to walk you through our proposed procurement policy and guidelines update. We are seeking to modernize our policy and our guidelines. While we are implementing our e-procurement module, it's the first of the finance systems transformation modules. So this is a perfect time for us, for Whitney to sort of take a look at our current program, it hasn't been updated since 2018. And council approves our procurement policy by resolution. So the purpose of this conversation tonight is to give you our recommendations on how this could modernize and streamline our program. And this evening, Whitney will be looking for a consensus on our proposed guidelines to come back and present to you formally for adoption by resolution. So I'll turn it over to Whitney. Perfect timing. Is your mic on? Green button or green light?
Here you go.
Thank you, Ally. And thank you, Mayor and council, for having me this evening. I appreciate your time. I'll go ahead and kick things off and give you a quick rundown of why we're here. As you're aware, I'm sure we've talked about it quite a bit here. We are improving our systems around the city to better serve our residents in the city of Wheat Ridge. One of those is migrating away from some of our legacy some systems that have been kind of clunky, if you will. For example, ABD DocuSign, BidNet, spreadsheets. And we're going to combine all of those into one streamlined solution so that way our vendors and residents can start to realize those improvements. So based on that, now is actually the perfect time for us to go ahead and modernize and update our procurement policy as well while we're going through and updating our system. So that's why I'm here this evening. And I hope you all enjoy this presentation. This can all be part of our next chapter. So as Ally said, I am Whitney Mugford-Smith. I'm the procurement manager here. And I have a teammate, Kelsey Carter, who's our procurement coordinator. The two of us are responsible for all of the solicitations, contracts, purchase orders, P-cards, solicitations, training. I've also gotten very good at negotiating. That's been my thing that I like to hang my hat on around here. But our overall goal is to get the best value for the city of Wheat Ridge. So we work really hard to maintain transparency and public procurement ethics. So that brings us back to why we're here. The timing of this is perfect as we're updating these systems. So it's a really good time for us to go ahead and modernize, not just our systems, but also our policies that support those systems. So our current guidelines currently have three different sets of limits and thresholds. And that can be a little bit confusing to staff. I'll go into that more later. And frankly, these current limits are no longer reasonable for the city. They're very low. And I will show you a comparison to the rest of the cities around us. So here we have our current goods and services chart. This is for things like equipment that's used at public works, things that we use in our parks to maintain those. It's pretty standard for goods and services to look this way. But then we also have our professional services chart. This has traditionally been used to refer to architecture and engineering. The procurement, public procurement industry is kind of moving away from that. So we're, you're seeing more combined charts instead. And this is our current construction chart. So I would get a lot of people trying to say, you know, does applying grass seed to a field count as construction? We are rototilling. And the answer is no, you still have to bid that. So here's what I'm proposing as our next round of limits. As you can see, I've put everything into one chart. And I want to be very clear, this chart does not impact the budget. This is only for budget-approved items. So I want to make that incredibly clear. We are not doing anything to the budget. The budget stays as is. But by simplifying this chart, we have a more sleek, streamlined round of limits, thresholds, and authorities. It's going to be easier for staff to understand. And we will be better equipped to help staff make the best procurement decisions on behalf of the city. So how did we get here? Well, I reached out to most of our neighbors and the rest of the metro to try to figure out where they all are. And based on that, the average formal solicitation limit is around 76,000. So we landed on 75,000 for Wheat Ridge. That makes sense. It feels good for us. We're currently at 25,000, which is that second to the bottom line there. And this will help streamline things. It will help expedite procurement within the city. It will just give everyone a better rounded, more modern way of approaching procurement. All right. So basically, my recommendation here is that we go ahead and move forward with these new approvals, with the new policy as written. I do believe you all have a copy of it in your packets. And this will, as we know, we already have given the city manager approval authority. So he's able to sign contracts on behalf of the city. So that was already a pretty helpful process improvement that we've experienced. And if approved, we will move forward at a regular business meeting and do an adoption of these. So thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to present.
Thank you very much. We'll start the questioning with Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Marion. Thanks for being here. So first off, I appreciate the attachment number two, which is the side-by-side comparison of the two different versions. And the whole new policy guideline book. And in the memo, when it said it would be near impossible to do a redline version, I can totally see why. But I just want to bring up a couple of points. You know, the definitions are clearer in this. The contract management is way more specific. The vendor selection's more specific. The ethics and compliance is robust compared to in the past one. And then like the formatting and the accessibility is way more clear. Now, knowing that we approve the budget, so this is funding that's being procured that we've already approved. So this is so that they can, as staff, do their job and more streamline quickly, more effectively. When I looked at the comparison to the other communities, when I saw that a couple of them, when it says board or council approval limit, say unbudgeted only, I'm just, my question is, why did we land on 75,000? Being pretty low, if you look at our surrounding communities, considering our surrounding communities go as high as unbudgeted only and then as low as 75,000. So I'm just wondering if there is, if there's a reason why you guys wanted to stop at 75,000? Like kind of what the thinking was around that? As far as the other spends go, I think that they absolutely have come more in line. Formal solicitation, I would even give you some more room on that one too, from 25,000. But I'm just wondering how you came up with those numbers? Because I really feel like you probably could have just a little bit more room in there.
Yes, thank you. That's a great question. And to be clear, we are proposing that we go to council at 150,000 rather than 75. 75 would be the new formal solicitation.
Oh, sorry. I was looking at the wrong line. Okay, good. Okay, 150 is significantly better. Okay. Well, and I do still want to wonder though, why not go all the way to unbudgeted only?
That's a great question. And Ally, do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I think, you know, I think there are different ways to handle that. When I worked for the city of Lakewood, we had a council in Lakewood. I don't know if they've changed it. They, yeah, they have. They're unbudgeted only. They used to be at 50,000. And so we used to create a list in the budget that was sort of everything over 50,000. It was the 50-plus list. And we would try and, and it was really hard to create that list, actually, because we sort of needed everybody to sort of think ahead and make sure we got everything on that list in order to preclude it from coming to council. So, you know, I think for us, we just feel like at 150,000, we're bringing that to you for contract approval. It sort of, it just keeps things in line. It's doubling the amount that we're at today. We feel comfortable with that. I'd be happy to take that back if you were to land on that consensus. And we could explore that further and think about the ramifications of going to unbudgeted, of going to unbudgeted only.
Yeah, I mean, what I was thinking about was, so the time and workpiece it takes to bring something to council at that threshold, when it's already in the budget that we've already approved, that we already spend a lot of time looking at? Like, that's not just staff time, but that's scheduling time in when we're scheduling meetings and stuff like that. And so that's why I was just wondering if that would be something, if it would be worth saving that work time for everybody else also, right? Or if there was a very specific reason why you felt like you didn't really want to go to that place? So just.
I was not prepared for that question and I really appreciate that.
I'm very excited, actually, to have that question. Another way of looking at it that I've seen other cities do, particularly these unbudgeted ones, is they'll go ahead and put together a memo for council, letting them know anything over 150 or whatever number they've landed on. It's a city. And just let council know, hey, these are the ones that are there. If you have questions, please let us know. We'll give you another 48 hours before they're actually purchased, just as another internal control for council to kind of have those, have that opportunity.
I mean, I feel like most of these items end up on consent agenda anyways. So, yeah.
They do. You're absolutely right. So that stuff is something we can explore. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you. Councilor Weaver.
Councilor Hoppe took all of my comments. No, I really appreciated the comparison and I think it's much clearer. I'm really supportive of these changes. I like the idea of possibly going to unbudgeted. And I guess I'd like to know, are there any downsides if we were to go to that? Because I understand it and I understand we're going to see it on consent agenda. And I would be fine with having an email or something that came to us. But would there be any downside to going to that model since we're already going to see it in consent agenda?
As far as I can tell, the only downside would be you may not have the oversight that you're used to having over those purchases. But that's really the only downside that I've found when talking through the industry.
I could be supportive of either one, that the council felt was better for you all. If that makes sense. Thank you. This is great. I think the new procedures are great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilor Oom.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Whitney. The presentation, so one question I have is, so the last time this was done is 2018. And so seven years, is that something that, is seven years the number that we review this every seven years?
Honestly, the reason we came to it for this particular year was just the system transformation that we're already in. Some cities will explore it every couple of years. When I previously worked for the city of Arvada, it had been closer to 15 years since they had reviewed. It really just depends on the agency and what the appetite is, as well as the market. To be perfectly frank, the market has exploded since COVID happened. And this is really, it's made these numbers that we currently sit at very unreasonable. Having to go out to formal solicitation for anything over $25,000 is a huge lift. So.
Yeah, I would like to, I would like to see something where we pick a number of years, whatever that is. And for me, it's not seven. And I do feel that, you know, there probably was a time in the past four to five years where we've seen stuff just double and that we need to be a little more, I guess, reactive of what those are. And I do have, I do trust staff has, I would like to keep some type of guardrail on the, what is that budget? Pick a number, but not unlimited. You know, if it needs to be, right now you said 150, you know. If it's doubled, I'm fine with that. But just, I think it's good to have some type of guardrail. And we can always adjust that. But I feel like we do need to have some type of year, whatever that review is. That staff picks if it's three years, four years. But seven seems like a long stretch. And then I look at this and I just did a real rough idea on an inflation calculator. And it looks like just roughly from 2018 to now is like 27% inflation. And so right now, we're probably, that would be like about 7,000 from 2018 instead of 10. But then when we pick this number, then that, what is that going to be? Another seven years out, now we're going to be too low. And so I would like it to be, I know it's, you know, we're going to have to pick a number and we're going to have to stick for it for a while. But I'd like it to be a little more in line with time instead of like, right now we might be too high, but then in another seven years, we're way too low again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Larson, did you have your?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And just real quick, first off, the policy documents. It's gaudy. It's beautiful. And I'm not familiar with any sort of policy doc regarding these sort of things. In the past, this is certainly answers questions that I'm sure would come up. Anyway, and regarding that question on budget, I agree that there, since we're looking at budgeted items and they do tend to go to the consent agenda, that we may be creating maybe unnecessary effort. But I also think that, you know, when every consent agenda item comes up, I tend to read through it and I tend to get a better perspective of kind of where we are and where our priorities are. And I'm sure that people follow city council from outside and appreciate the ability to look at our contracts. So unless, and typically, I will read that sort of exciting material when I have to, when it's up on the consent agenda. So having it in front of me, I think, is appreciated. It also becomes part of our archive and it's easily readable. So I'm kind of split. I can see arguments from both sides. But I think at this point, my support would go to maintaining the council approval limit.
At 150,000?
At 150,000.
Thank you. Councilor Dozen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You looked over there, so I thought you were going to call somebody else. Appreciate it. So I completely understand the sentiment and logic around having it just be unbudgeted. And I do like the fact that we're leaning on those experts within those departments to allocate things towards greatest need and having that greater autonomy. But my concern with not having some sort of guardrail would be that a large purchase would be made and then something would have to come back because they took it from that budgeted amount and then have a need later that necessarily, like they allocated this money towards something else that they saw the greater need in that moment. And then we then have an unbudgeted item come before us to kind of make up for it because that was spent elsewhere. So some sort of threshold, I think, I would definitely be in favor of, even if it were a little bit higher than 150,000. But I appreciate that even at that level, you know, that there's a formal bid process. Because I really appreciated that on part of our city staff in going and seeking, you know, requests for proposals and really taking into consideration not just the most affordable option, but also that suit our needs best and who we're best able to work with. But I agree, I think that we should keep some sort of city council approval. And again, really appreciate this. Was definitely time to review and modernize and update. And I'm really appreciative of staff's efforts in doing that holistically around our code and you're just bringing it all to us. And I love that we're coming into the present and looking to the future. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Dozen.
Councilor Holtein.
Thank you. Like others, I agree with this. First of all, I really appreciate we're bringing this, not just increasing the minimums, but also just bringing it into clarity and simplicity. Good for everybody. I agree with a lot of things that Councilor Larson just said. I think we benefit when these are coming to our consent agenda for the opportunity for us to be tracking, for the public to be tracking, for us to understand. I mean, my civic infrastructure knowledge has grown a lot through consent agenda items like this. But I think there's also a lot of sort of like titrating out of our expenditures throughout the year. And it's a way to keep a pulse on like what we're spending our money on. So that said, I would definitely support raising it to 250,000. For, I appreciate, you know, wanting to be cognizant of the burden of staff for the work that they have to do. So 250,000 feels like a threshold for me that I'm comfortable with to find some balance between what has to come to us. But I think when I was preparing for tonight and reflecting back on like, what are some of the big-ticket things? Those are some of the things that like generally are also impacting our community, our conversations we're getting engaged in outside of the dais and chambers. So I would support 250. After that, I'd probably get a little less comfortable, but that's where I am. Thanks.
So thank you.
Mayor Potem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. It's fantastic. I, just to save time, I agree with Councilor Larson and Councilor Holtein. I think 200, 250, somewhere in there, I would be okay with. But I definitely want to have that oversight with it coming to the agendas because we can take things off of consent agenda and discuss them. And so I like the guardrails. I also actually agree with Councilor Oom, maybe looking at a three- or four-year, every three- or four-year cycle of looking at this because that's around election-ish times for people. And that's really when things kind of seem to shake up. So, I'm open to both, but moving forward with those. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. Just thank you for this presentation. As someone who's still new to knowing my job, this is really helpful. One question, and you may have mentioned it, but I don't think you did. The current, what our current levels are, there's 100,000 for construction and then in the new proposed, there's not.
Correct.
Can you just speak about that a little bit as to why?
Absolutely. One of the things that has come up repeatedly is getting rid of the construction option. I spoke with Maria DeAndrea, our Public Works Director, about this as well when she started with us. And what we see is a lot of times, people will deem something construction to avoid going to the procurement process. So, by getting rid of that construction option, we've really simplified things. And there's just one set of rules to remember. And you don't have to come back and ask, is the delivery, is the delivery the installation? Or installing new signs, does that count as construction? And things like that that really are not construction. Construction is horizontal and vertical. It's not putting up a new sign. So, it's just one of those things that will make it a lot simpler for staff to understand.
That makes sense, and thank you for that.
Yeah.
The other thing I just wanted to kind of ask really quickly, when you were collecting this information from our other community neighbors, did you get a sense of how often they review?
This is a very big lift, I'll be honest. I know that Arvada did it in 2019, I believe, and not since. I know Lakewood has done it. They, this is relatively new for Lakewood. And as Ally mentioned, it was much lower when she was there. The city of Aurora actually is in the process of doing it now. City of Thornton did theirs about six months ago. So, it's not something that happens terribly often. But I think if we were to get in the habit of looking at the policy overall and the limits, it would be less of a lift because it'd be something that we do regularly versus every seven years, like you mentioned.
Thank you for that. I definitely would be in favor of, similar to what Mayor Potem Stites said about just a four-years-ish. And I'd also be comfortable with the 200, 250,000 as a limit for that. But this is great, and thank you so much for all the knowledge. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go back to Councilor Hoppe, I have just a couple of questions myself. When you talk about board council approval limit and unbudgeted only, what exactly does that mean?
Those are typically going to be projects that were not originally accounted for in their lineup of budget. So, if something came up, usually, it's pretty rare, actually, that anything. I talked significantly at length about City of Longmont. And they said they very, very rarely bring anything to council because the majority of their things are budgeted. But this comes up if someone goes to a conference, gets a wild hair and decides they want some new software or they want a new widget that's not currently budgeted in their lineup of budget. So, that's where they go back to council.
If it's in the budget, then it wouldn't, nothing would go back to council?
Correct.
Council wouldn't really even know whether the contract had been signed, the project started, or anything like that. And so, that would be sort of any amount of money. If we had a $4 million park going to go on, city manager could sign that contract and we wouldn't have any knowledge of it or any real... Okay? Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just wanted to clarify, if it was something that was, it'll only come back to us unless it's not in the budget, we wouldn't see it in consent agenda. So, I just wanted to clarify that. And then, everything over $75,000, whether it's the board council approval limit or not, gets a formal solicitation is how that's working. So, I just wanted to make sure those were clear. But with, and you're not going to throw myself on the sword for unbudgeted. But from what I've heard, I think I could maybe put together a consensus with some different limitations than what's been presented.
Do we have any other discussion before we go for, try to go for consensus? Okay, Councilor, please.
I'd like to find a consensus to move forward with the adoption of the 2025 revised procurement policy and guidelines by resolution with the increased amount of board approval limit to $250,000. And that staff will review within X years, X meaning determined by staff, what they feel like the appropriate number of years would be, whether that's every other three or four, with them knowing what that workload would take without, we don't know what that workload would take. So, I'd like to ask for consensus for that.
We have consensus. Do you have any questions about that or anything else that we need to clarify on that?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilor Hoppe. I was a little surprised. So, thank you. That's a real, that's a gift. And I think, I just want to acknowledge that for, I'm sure, Whitney, if I'm in your seat, then that tells me that this team has faith in the work that you're doing. So, thank you. I just wanted to make sure, Mayor, that I understood the consensus for the review. And this won't go in the code. We could certainly put this in the resolution. Would you like us to propose a number of years or perhaps a range of years? That this will be reviewed between three and five years?
I think that's something you guys should decide on what that lift is and how often that lift should be managed through your office. So, should it be a range of years? Should it be a hard every two years, hard every four years?
Thank you so much. And so, when we bring that back, we will have a draft of that in the resolution and the resolution drafted in the council action form for discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just sort of want to add maybe to keep, to consider that we have elections every other year, but we're on four-year terms. So, it seemed like we might want to keep it sort of within that margin so that each new council and partial new council would be able to sort of opine on that. So, we have consensus on that? Is there anything else then that we need to take care of for you?
I don't think so. Thank you for your time.
All right, terrific. Thank you very much. Great presentation. Deputy Manager, you're good with all that?
That was wonderful. Thank you so much for your support. Yeah, thank you, Councilor Hoppe. I'm sorry. I was like, wait, what? That's great. Thank you. Thank you, Whitney. I know that was a huge lift for you. So, and you start training staff next week. So, we will start moving forward with that consensus. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we will go to item number three. This is a discussion on council's vision and mission statements. Deputy Manager.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Mary Ann Schilling, Assistant City Manager, for joining us. So, this is exciting. I'm just going to tee this up and then we're going to turn it over to Councilors Hoppe and Holtein. But first, this is, as a reminder, this is a follow-up to your retreat, which was held on January 31st and February 1st of this year. As you recall, we worked on vision and mission in that retreat and you all landed on two different drafts of each vision and mission. And Councilors Hoppe and Holtein volunteered to, or were voluntold, I can't quite remember which. Okay, Councilor Hoppe volunteered, Councilor Holtein was voluntold, to take your two drafts of each and come back with a final draft for you all. So, I'll turn it over to them in just a moment. But first, I just wanted to provide some additional context. And Mary Ann, feel free to jump in here for what else is in the packet. So, there's a memo that is intended to provide a high-level recap of the retreat, including your aspirations for the city in 15 years and also those broad ambitions that we talked about. And as you know, we have a very active work plan for the next two years and beyond. And so, we know that we talked about the fact that it will be really up to the next council to flesh out the future vision topics and the future work plan. But in your packet, we did include drafts of what we're calling ideals. Mary Ann worked super hard on that. And those are designed to help staff operationalize the final vision and mission based on what we heard from you all at the retreat. We also included proposed strategic priorities for 2025 and 2026. We didn't have sort of new specific priorities since the 2021 retreat. And these encapsulate the major elements of that current work plan. That was that big giant grid we looked at, if you recall, on the Friday night. And for us, those encapsulate those major elements. So, Mary Ann and I are here to listen, says the woman talking, and take any feedback as to elements that we might have missed. That's what we are here for tonight. But with that, I'll turn it over to your co-councilors to talk about how they got to where they landed.
Yeah, thank you. And a lot of thank-yous to Councilwoman Holtein for working on the extra work in team with me on this. Really, Councilor Holtein and I, we took the drafts, the two drafts of the vision and the mission. We both took a stab at it individually from what we heard from everybody at the retreat. And then, we came together and took a couple of different stabs at it, mixed it up in the bowl and came out with a baked cake. And I think that we did a really good job of hearing what was important to everybody in that room and being able to put it into words and also under the mission that we were told to keep it short. So, I'll kick it over to Ms. Holtein. She has any other comments on that?
Thanks. So, I will, I'd like to just say, it didn't take us that long to do this work because so much of the work was done when we were all in the room together. And as we were working on this, we had visual references of all the original drafts that had gone on the wall, words that had been listed. So, as we were doing the work, we were constantly checking it against the conversations we had had in the room. So, we hope that what, where this landed is reflective of a continuation of those conversations and refinement. And one of the other lenses we really took, I think, when you do an activity like this, it's easy to kind of become, like, you read it so many times that you just don't see it anymore. And so, we actually like stopped and just took a minute and we're like, imagine you're looking at this for the very first time. Like, how would this strike you? Because this is going to have legs and it's already translating into really cool work plan kind of things. But like, I kept thinking, you know, what would this look like to somebody in seven years? You know, how would this vision and mission translate to the conversations we had, but in a way that was really like invitational and setting the table for the work of the people who are coming after us? So, hopefully, those efforts are reflected in. And with that, we're just as excited as you are for the rest of this conversation. So, thank you.
Councilor Weaver.
Thank you all for your work on this. No, I really appreciated the vision and the mission and actually, the whole document because it, clearly, you all did go back to the hard work we spent on that day. What I'm excited about is when I read it, I thought, you know, obviously, and I didn't catch his first name, but the man who was here at our first, from the EDC, Jansen, the way he spoke about collaboration and all of the cool things that were happening. That's, you know, when I read these again just now, I was like, oh, yeah, that's it. So, thank you. I really like this. I don't have any changes that I feel like I need to propose from any of these things. And I feel like you all captured what we did. Thanks.
Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to Councilmembers Holtein and Hoppe. Reading through this, it has a lot of, you know, really great words that, you know, that really resonate, I think, not just with me, but with our entire community. And he did us proud. And I think, you know, I liked, you know, looking at some of the other, when we had our retreat, looking at some of the other cities, I think this really is going to shine the best and the brightest. I really do. So, thank you.
Additional discussion? Councilor Larson.
Mayor, and as somebody who's been a career journalist and a former communication professional and a whole bunch of other things, had to do with words and what words can do, I had to rewrite it. And for me, the best way to look at what we did is we had a lot of what and I still would have been better to see the words on paper, the people, the old turnoff on websites and these would be used by people. There might be a lot of these. Anyway, my thought was that while this is very reflective of the time of building, there are certain words that when they become part of a statement, they can cause, they can react, the better words. And there are a couple of words in here that he'll do that. So, I wanted to balance it out. So, my statement is, we should have been, welcome, you're welcome to me, we're collaborating, adults, people, and students. Create a future built on fair and equal access for everyone, also for you, I think. Inverted innovation in our tradition. I think it's important to bring the history and the tradition that combined itself with experience in theory. It has built on fair and equal opportunities for everyone. And then, the term supporting that the inverted innovation in common tradition, I think, helps to support those three thoughts. So, there it is. Again, I couldn't let this opportunity pass. I know that there was a lot of work, a lot of work, we'll end this, I've had more discussion with the retreat. But as members announced, I provide the news. No, I thought so.
Okay. Discussion. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for contributing in this conversation during the retreat and then kind of drilling it down to tangible comments. I was going to speak to the tradition. I really appreciated that piece, incorporating that piece. And so, that felt like it was kind of missing from the revision that was provided from, you know, the draft one and two and how it was combined. And I also, I think that I didn't really understand connectivity between people, places, and businesses. I mean, to me, that talks transportation, not like interfacing with each other. And so, I think the connotation or the perspective that that, or image that that provided, just I don't think was the intention behind that wording. But I really appreciate that we've all been able to come together and help make this happen. And that collaboration piece has been the most important. And I think that it's great that that made it into our vision statement.
So, I guess my question for the group is, do we want to, we want to discuss the first one, the vision, and then the mission? Or just say, Dan, be quiet?
Not a lot of takers there. Councilor, Mayor Potem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just reading yours for the first time. So, but I, I think I'm going to go with the originals on this or the ones that Councilor Holtein and Hoppe created. And I like what Mary Ann and the staff have already put together. You know, one of the things that's important about our vision and mission statement is that it's actually actionable and that the staff and the community, but the staff and I picture like Wheat Ridge 101 and them being able to read this and take the action steps and do something with it. So, I think, I think I'm going to just, I don't know how we do it other than just, I'm going to go with raising my hand for number one and moving forward with that. Thank you.
I had a couple of other editorial things that I wanted to bring up, but they're not substantive. They're more word inflection. But let me do that now. On both Mr. Larson's and the original one, we talk about Wheat Ridge is a dynamic and welcoming community. Now, this is, we're talking about our city here. So, are we talking about the city or the larger community that's Wheat Ridge? Sort of where we were from the 1850s to 1969? And that, to me, is the question. Is it, does this include sort of South Arvada or, you know, and parts of Lakewood?
Yeah, thank you. And I know that came up at the retreat. And when we worked on this, it was something we had to discuss too. And we chose community because we wanted to make sure that what we're talking about is a culture of who we are as a community within the city. And the concern was if we just say city, do we mean just the city government? Or just how like the city functions as an entity as opposed to as like a dynamic community? And we thought the word community better reflected what the other, the other points that are being made around like collaboration and like different people. So, it is meant to reflect sort of more the living body of the community, which is the people and the places and how we interact with one another and not like the city as a functioning entity. So... So if that is a distinction, um, I mean, I think what, my experience is that we run the city government, but we function in an ecosystem that's our community. And so that was the choice of the word community and would welcome other people's like reflections and thoughts on that.
So is community then a subset of the city? You said the, the community within the city.
I think the city is a subset of the community.
So you think the city is a subset of the community?
Yeah, the city is the functioning government that's part of our community, which includes...
Well, and I would also say, instead of saying we are, we start with Wheat Ridge is, and Wheat Ridge is the city and then the community, and then the community piece is then within that, right? So, yeah, so it, you know, it does, it, it does identify the city, Wheat Ridge, but then it encompasses the community, which is all who live in the community. And, and I, and to, to Dan, Dan, what I want to say is, like, we, we could wordsmith all day long. Our, our mission was to take what we had already done and to put something together so that we didn't sit in a, you know, in a rolling washing machine of wordsmithing and swapping words in and out and stuff like that, so.
And just while I'm on a roll here, the other one I had a question on was the word guides. And guides to me is sort of like, you know, the, the guides that lead the, lead the horses out there into the unknown. And I wondered if it might be stronger to guide, to guide growth by embracing.
I think that, maybe it's hard because it's on two lines, like if the word guides was right next to the word people, but as you read it, Wheat Ridge is a dynamic and welcoming community where collaboration with all people guides growth by embracing equity, innovation and tradition. Um, I feel like, and I feel like the word guides is the right word to use here instead of guide, like...
The, the verb?
Yeah.
See, I thought it was the verb that you want to, to guide.
I mean, I guess we could take guide growth by, we could take the S off of it. I don't know that I'd put the D on it, but I'm not, I'm not an English major either.
So it's collaboration guides, so it is the right tense. Yeah. Yeah, so it's, yeah. Collaboration guides. I think it's confusing because it has people next to guides. And so maybe that association pulls stronger the way it's written there.
And I'd just like to say, no, no other changes. I understand the process here and I understand all of the work that went into this and I, I put this out there for consideration and we'll revisit it in a couple of years, I guess, right?
Yeah.
How often do we revisit this? I mean, it's been definitely more than...
Fifteen or twenty years.
Yeah, exactly.
It's, it's really up to you. I think it had been quite some time since the 2035 vision. I mean, this council hasn't, I, I don't know if, who here was here when, when you all worked on the 2035. No, okay. It was definitely before we started, yeah. So, I mean, I think, I think very similar to the, you know, procurement guidelines, I think it, I, I think the goal here is that you land on a, a vision and mission that may serve us for perhaps a couple of, of councils, perhaps? And, you know, and, and allows the council to then, again, I think dig deeper into how it's operationalized, what the work plan, let's say 2027, right, Mary Ann? I think we, our work plan is really focused on the next two years plus, but really what the work plan in 2027 and on looks like. And that, my question would be, does this inspire you to do that?
Counselor Hoppy.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. And I just, um, I, I think that it would be, it would be great if we wrap the discussion up around the vision and mission specifically and then we could maybe move into some of the ideals and strategic priorities because they're fantastic and I'm super excited to discuss those, but don't necessarily want us to get in a crazy eight of going around and around. And so, um, so if we wrap up the conversation around the vision and mission, then I would love to start talking about the ideals and the strategic planning.
Let's see how we can do. Do we have consensus to adopt the vision statement as presented in the, or have we got some more discussion?
Yeah, so I just, I just wanted to ask around like connectivity between, as opposed to connections with or connections between, like, like the connectivity, that, that verbiage. Like, um, so instead, instead of saying like envaluing connections either among people, places and businesses or between people, places and businesses, why, why it was connectivity, like, as chosen for that word specifically?
Well, connectivity is a couple of connotations. So connectivity, people, places and businesses is not necessarily just connect, connection, like connecting with someone, it's the connectivity to those places also. So the connectivity to our parks and to our businesses and also the connectivity of like people-to-people connection kind of thing.
So I guess I'm, I'm asking, was the intention for it to be more transportationally based of like, of how people are connected and getting to those places and businesses? Or if it was really those relationships, I guess?
It's both.
Okay, you think it encompasses both? Okay.
Yeah, and that really came from what we're hearing from the city plan around, like, that we are a community of like these unique distinct places. And so like connection between those places and then we're also through prosperity plan wanting to connect people with businesses, right? Like, and so infrastructure can be both like the physical tangible infrastructure, like we need to be able to like get from one place to another for like, you know, holistically across all these things. Like, if you can't get around your community, you're not a connected community. But we also really value that, like, we're about connecting people with the places and with the businesses. So it's meant to kind of reference infrastructure, both as like, like a hard tangible infrastructure, but then also the soft tissue infrastructure, which is, you know, what we heard about a lot tonight from EDC, local works work, like our community outreach and engagement. So it's meant to, to reference sort of both, both. It's, yeah, it, it carries both meanings. I think if you go to connections, it loses a little bit of some of that like hard infrastructure, which has been a big priority that we've heard across a lot of our planning and is something we've spent a lot of money in the city on. So I think it's meant to carry both, but...
Additional discussion? Can we see a consensus on approving the, as presented? Okay, that's okay. Can we move on to the mission statement? And do we have any additional discussion on the mission statement? There is none. We have consensus to approve the mission statement as presented? Looks like we do. Okay. Carry on.
Oh, I, I think that we're at the Wheat Ridge ideals piece, which I just want to say, you guys did a fantastic job listening that entire weekend and, and being able to bullet point those conversations into some actionable items and some, some strategic priorities that we can move forward with. When I, when I first read this, I, I said to myself, I feel really fantastic that this is a place that our strategic priorities can be in 25, 26. I agreed with, agreed with all of them. I felt like we, as a, as a body, have been really, have spent a, a good amount of time, like in the trenches, like digging the dirt to get the plans going, to get, right? And, and we've really been doing that. And so then now to have more of like kind of a, a vision forward. And I, I feel, I feel really good that when I'm not here next year, that the new people that will be sitting around these tables will have a really solid structure and they won't necessarily have to be so much in the trenches. And so I think this is really fantastic. I think we did as a body a really good job, so. And, and thank you, Mary Ann, for pulling all of our words together into something that we can visualize and, and follow.
Counselor Hulteen.
I just want to add, so I didn't realize this was gonna come out of the vision, mission. And, I mean, I'm not, I wasn't surprised, but I wasn't making the one-to-one correlation like that it would. And so when I saw how the vision, mission translated so elegantly, like being able to capture the body of work that the city's doing, that this council has really shaped and, you know, through dialogue with our community, like, to, like, honestly, I got like that, like kind of excited chills goosebump thing. I was like, oh wow, it like actually like falls together really well. So I just, and it was a neat little three items per thing, which I love the magic of the number three. So it just, it felt really legible to me in a way that like, I feel like I could take this to a district meeting and give it to people and they would like understand not just what we're doing, but like who we are as, as a body. And I would hope that they see themselves implicit in it. And so I just, yeah, I, I love it. And my one question after all of that fangirling on it is, I am just sort of curious, like, you mentioned in your introductory comments, Ellie, that like this is something that's, that's in development and to get refined, can you speak a little bit of like what, like what do we do with the Wheat Ridge ideals? Like, what is the process to, are they like open and ongoing and something that we're constantly shaping or is it something that we have like a real process around and adopt or like, yeah?
Thank you. And Mary Ann, feel free to chime in. Um, thank you. Yeah, I think when we, we, we took the, the vision and mission and again, knowing that, we talked about this at the retreat, right? There's gonna be unfortunately significant turnover in that, in the council this, this year. And so we, you know, we talked about vision and mission is, is important. And I know I mentioned to a few of you after the, the retreat, how, how perfect this is for staff, us staff of the organization really need this. They need to understand, I think, the, the vision and mission. We have values, but that's gonna be really helpful. And then we said, well, knowing that really we'll do this, the, I think what we'll do, we took sort of had good conversation about broad ambitions, but we felt like we need a way in the meantime for the next, you know, while we're getting a new, frankly, a new, a new council seated, um, it might take a while before there's sort of another retreat with that new group as they're forming and storming and all the things, um, to, to figure out how we operationalize that vision and mission. And so that's what, I think what we're saying is, we'd like something now that, that works for now. Is that fair, Mary Ann? That then could later be, you, you, yeah.
I mean, that's exactly what I was gonna say. This has such a framework for staff, it's such a framework for council and these things take time. So I think that we would want it to kind of seep in for a while, see how it feels and then see if any changes need to get made from there.
Yeah, so I would envision that the, at the next council retreat, which there will be different faces at the table, we take the existing vision and mission and then refine what those, those bigger ideals are and then the future work plan to start in 2027.
Counselor Weaver.
I feel like this is our future love letter to the next council. Um, no, I really appreciate it and I, I don't think we really need to get into the wordsmithing as it's been said before. I really feel like you all heard and wrote down what you heard and I, and I do feel like this is, it doesn't have to be perfect because each one of us might write these slightly different. It's a feeling and I think it conveys a feeling really, really well. And to your point that you were just saying, I, it's a, it's a guiding document. So, you know, it's that love letter of, oh, they still like me. I have this letter. So that's all I have to say. Thanks. And I, I really like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And as somebody who will be here for the next council, at least, I hope, I would like to go through a couple of these. I made some notes as we went through. The, under the strategic priorities, and that's on page 52 of the agenda packet, under item number one, where we talk about stormwater master plan and then recommend implementation. And I'd suggest that include in there communications or, or information or something that explains what a stormwater utility fee is because it's gonna surprise a lot of people and they may not react very well. Under, overall, this is a wonderful document and I think it's, it's very helpful because it does provide a, an actual blueprint, an actual, hey, we said we're gonna do this and it involves this. Implement photo and red light radar. In there, I would suggest you add something that, that specifies that when you implement and, uh, when you implement photo and red light radar, you're doing that according to the guidelines that council provided, uh, the police department and on deployment under what's called automated, a vehicle information system. And that's very clear documented. It is very helpful to understand what it is we're doing, why we're doing it and what, what won't happen. So maybe expand on that one just a little bit. Research and implement artificial intelligence and integration. I, I think that's one that, you know, will have a probably a gold star on it because artificial intelligence is sort of a, a train that is leaving the station and if you're not on the train, you're, you're gonna be late. Under item four, I had a question on completing the Youngfield beautification project. I've, I even forgot what my question was. I understand that that project is, it's actually underway right now. Am I correct?
Yes, construction hasn't started, but, but design, yes, design, that was very much inside works. And so that's, you know, what we tried to do under number four, Counselor Larson, is pull out the major, the major projects that are on that CIP list.
And as far as I could tell, it is a fairly comprehensive list. I mean, I can't think of anything that's not on there that we're, said we're gonna do.
Thank you. Yeah, we, we did source this with the directors and in this case, Director DeAndrea, Public Works Director, made sure that we had sort of the, again, this is not a, I, I have the work, I have the visual representative, the work plan, and it's not everything, but it's the big buckets. I would say it's the heavy, the big ticket items and sort of the major categories. May I ask a clarifying question, Mayor, to Counselor Larson? Counselor Larson, with AI, were you suggesting additional language or to clarify, or were you reinforcing that you agree with that point?
Well, well, when we say research and implement artificial intelligence integrations to create staff capacity and enhance the customer experience, it's a fairly broad statement, like a lot of things revolving around IT. You tend to see these broad sort of, let's do this. When it gets down to the actual implementation, it's a little, it's a little more nuanced. And, and research and implement mean come back with some specific ideas, I guess.
Um, may I give you an example?
Certainly.
That we're actually researching with a hope to implement very quickly. And, and I think that's part of my request would be that this be quite broad because we don't know what the, we're sort of on this cusp of, we don't, we, we know that there's going to be opportunities, we just don't know exactly what they are. But currently we are researching an AI integration with our police department body cams that will produce the first draft of reports for our officers. It will literally take something that currently takes hours. It will give the officers an automatic first draft for them to review, check for context, fact, fact check, but it will take that, it will turn that job to minutes and they will be back out on the street. We know that Open Gov, the system that we've decided to put our, our, our eggs in their basket, in Open Gov's basket, we were just, some of us were just at a conference downtown last week and it was, man, I am so excited about this. We made the right choice. They are talking about some really great AI integrations that will be available in the next year for us to help expedite plan review, as an example, where they're using AI to, to scan plans according to the IBC, the International Building AI to scan plans according to the IBC, the International Building Code, but also your own municipal code, and again, provide a first draft. So we're, I, we don't yet know what all the opportunities will be. What we're asking for is, I guess, permission, if you like, to, when they, when those opportunities come along, that we say, hey, it's important that we go look at them. Not every opportunity will be right for us, but those are just two that have come up in the last 30 days.
And I would think-
That weren't there when we met in retreat. Yeah.
We, we don't know what we don't know.
Right.
And these things will come, land in our laps over the, you know, the course of time, and it's a question of, is it something we want, we want to implement? Or is it, are there, you know, are there risks involved or whatever? And that's, that's where you guys come in, to be able to filter these things out. And it's encouraging to hear that the new OpenGov system has anticipated that. That's encouraging. The next time I had was, oh, under item five, ensure fiscal sustainability, that last bullet item, enhance the city's emergency preparedness plan and strategies. That is something that I, you know, given, well, what's happened, not just in Wheat Ridge, but in other places, emergency preparedness is something that has to stay in the top of mind. We always have to be ready, and I would encourage the collaboration with regional, with Jefferson County's emergency response folks, with some of the other areas of regional things, to just stay as close to the front of the line when it comes to being prepared for something that we don't expect. The Anderson Pool reference, I'm going to let that one go. Public art projects on Wadsworth? I wasn't aware of any specific public art projects on Wadsworth, but I may have missed something.
Um, sorry. Did you want to?
Well, I was on the art committee, so yes, there's art, there's art at the north end. On the west side, there'd be a large sculpture there. On the southeast corner, there's a large wall that's going to be in front of the senior living apartments that are behind there. So there's some art going on there. And then there was steel sculpture art planned for intermediate, on the median, and I think those have been sort of nixed by CDOT, so there, those are going in other places.
Our friends at CDOT.
But, but they're really, they're sort of interesting sculptures, they're sort of designed off of, and let me see if I can confuse myself even more, sort of the molecular structure of seeds and things, celery seeds that occur in our, in our environment.
And these are all pieces that have already been commissioned?
Yes.
Great. I'm sorry? Oh, did, okay.
So that's part of the 1% of public projects in urban rural area, public art, that there is convened a sort of a public art committee specific to specific locations, and then that comes before you for-
Okay. Thank you.
Procurement, yeah.
The, skip the zoning. Oh, engineering, education, enforcement, this is item number seven.
Yes.
Third bullet, focus on engineering, education, and enforcement to improve traffic safety and driver behavior. This goes back to the automotive vehicle identification system we're deploying, and I, you know, I can't emphasize my support for the sort of work our police department does to enforce safety on the roads. I mean, it's just, it's one of those, it's a constant sort of, you have to, you know, you did a good job on Sunday and on Monday have to do another good job. You can't relax on that kind of stuff. It's just, it's continuous. And then the, I know we've been talking about the NOAA Naturally Occurring Affordable Housing Program. Are we planning an update for the council anytime soon? I'd like to kind of be brought up to date on that.
Thank you, Counselor Larson. Happy to pass that along.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's number seven. That's the last of the list. Thank you.
Counselor O'M.
Yeah, one comment on the, it said about the AI, create staff capacity. I know Chief Murtha had talked about something similar with the cameras, that it was a resource multiplier. So could you, what do you mean by create staff capacity? Is it, I have an idea what it's supposed to mean, but it sounds a little bit different.
Yeah, I think what I'm talking about to create staff capacity, and we're happy to take any feedback on anything that's confusing, is to, so in the case, for example, of let's use the Axon Body Cam AI report writing as an example, we may not be needing to sit here come budget time requesting additional officers because we are literally creating more capacity for the officers we already have. They're able to do their jobs FOSTA and get back out, and get back out there on the street. So that's how we've been talking about this with staff, right? We're, you know, down at the OpenGov conference, we're learning that, hmm, AI plan review. And there's this inherent fear around, oh, my gosh, what does that mean for my job? Well, we know that we have more work than we have people for, right? In Wheat Ridge, and that will likely be the case for some years. So it's about giving, you know, our turnaround times should be FOSTA. It's not necessarily that we need less people, we may not need more people, but our turnaround times and our work, you know, will be, will be faster. So that's what we mean by creating staff capacity. A lot of what we just did with Whitney, actually, they're talking about AI integrations into like common tasks in our financial module. Well, you know, time that we can get back is precious. Does that help? By creating staff capacity, that's what, that's what, that's what I meant when I wrote that particular point.
Yeah, I just, I just want to, I just want to make sure that someone doesn't read that and think like, oh, we're, staff's great, we're going to have staff capacity, and we don't need anything more. That, to me, it still sounds like resource multiplier, that you're using it to enhance or multiply.
Perhaps we could use the word enhance rather than create.
Whatever, what do you, whatever you guys decide, but yeah, I just don't want to give the impression that we're-
There will be no thumb twiddling. No, but I appreciate, in fact, we, what we don't know with photo radar, it may create, you know, we don't yet know truly what that workload will look like until we, until we start that. So it's, as an example, but I think that, do you agree, Mary Ann? Maybe we use the word enhance instead of create there. Yeah, thanks for pointing that out.
Thank you.
We can do some more wordsmithing there if you wanted.
Fine. What is it our facilitator said? What, where dreams go to die?
Okay. Additional discussion on the, on the strategic priorities or the ideals? I think it's a really great, great list of things. Bet you did a nice job. Do you need any official motions? We can't vote, but-
I think we have the consensus on the vision and mission, and it sounds like we had permission to tweak a couple of things on the priorities. And-
Get ready to spring that on a new council.
And say, hey, former council gave you a gift. To Counselor Larson's point, it's only some of you. It's a, it is encouraging. I agree. It's very, it's hope, it's hope-filled. Yeah.
Okay. Anything else to discuss on this item, then? Well, thank you very much for bringing it. This has been a good discussion. Thanks to Counselor Hulteen and Counselor Hoppe for doing this, this hard work to put these words together and get it over the finish line. Good. All right. Okay. We're going to go to Word Jones is next.
Good one, Mayor.
All right. Okay, good. Well, we're going to go, we're going to go now to agenda, item number four, there's a staff reports, and we'll go to deputy city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Couple quick things for me, and then, Mary, I'm not sure if you have anything. Just exciting, the Wheat Ridge Cultural Commission has a grant opportunity available. So we just want to remind everybody that organizations and individuals can apply for grant funding of up to $500 for enrichment opportunities taking place between July and December of 2025 that promote culture and arts in Wheat Ridge. So interesting, interested parties can access the application and learn about criteria by visiting the Wheat Ridge Cultural Commission Facebook page, and the application deadline for that is May 31st. So encourage folks to do that. And then my second thing is, I just wanted to mention that April is distracted driving awareness month. I keep saying it's distracted driving month, which means like, it sounds like we're celebrating that, but we're not. We are promoting distracted driving awareness. So we started with, this is our Be Safe Employee Safety Committee, started with an internal campaign where encouraging employees to take the pledge to just drive. As you know now, it is illegal to use your, pick up your phone and use it while you're driving in Colorado, and we're really trying to emphasize just focus on the road and focus what you're doing. But starting last week, we took that campaign public. So it's a great collaboration among our, all of our communicators, including Alex Rose and Amanda Harrison and their teams. So we're encouraging you all in the public, again, go to, go to our social media, you'll find the distracted driving awareness month pledge, and we encourage you to take it by the end of the month. So thank you very much. That's all I have. Mary Ann?
Okay. Counselors. Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. I love that. That is such a cool thing to do. Thanks for sharing that. I will take that pledge before I go to bed tonight. Couple things going on. Last week, the Active Transportation Advisory Team hosted a meeting, which was a follow-up to their state of the city, in which they had, they were about told people from the community, they came and they were going through what, what the community felt was most important for the ad-outs to focus on this year, and I just was really impressed with how many people came and are caring a lot about what we can be doing, both programmatically and with our dollars. And there was a lot of interest in improving safe access to Stevens. And so looking forward to hearing what, what comes from that meeting. And then the Sustainable Wheat Ridge met, and we heard from our Parks and Rec Department. As we all know, unfortunately, right now USDA has withdrawn the tree grant that we got. However, like many of the federal funding volleys, there's still some optimism and hope that that might come back. But really wanted to thank Brandon, and I cannot remember the gentleman's name with the forestry department, but he came and just talked to us about all the great things that we are doing in the city around trees. And we plant so many trees in the city, and we just had our community tree sale on Saturday. And I think we, we are Tree City USA, but I think we go above and beyond, and I just was really impressed with not just how many trees we put in the ground, but how we work with our community to keep trees healthy. So anyway, like yay, yay, trees. And tomorrow's Earth Day, so hug a tree tomorrow and know that we're doing good work in this community to keep it healthy. Thanks.
Counselor O'M.
Okay, I got three things, real quick. Number one, trees. My wife talked me into planting a plum tree, and we planted one, and a lesson that I learned was I should have kept it in the plastic pot because the next day, it was, I had to move it a little bit, like two feet, a little comment, and it was a good comment, and I should have known better, that, you know, I should have kept it a little further away from the fence. But number two, we're good. So I got yay for the tree. The second thing is definitely this time of year, I'm seeing all the dandelions, and I just want to remind everybody to, the dandelions aren't that big of a deal, please don't spray them because the bees are starting to come out, and it's just going to kind of mess things up for the bees. And then the third thing I want to talk about was, we've all talked about words. I think our community does need, you know, encouragement, and one idea I had for the summer when we had the Carnation Festival Parade is, you know, could we, you know, could we think about having words on a T-shirt that would, you know, and I don't know what those words would be, but we, we know we now have a vision and mission statement, so perhaps it could be some of those words to, you know, kind of offer some support. So that's just an idea. Yeah, just an idea for T-shirts that we, you know, we kind of, kind of wear what we write. Thank you.
Okay. Additional elected officials' reports. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And over the weekend, I had the opportunity to attend a wedding in the family. My younger brother's daughter, middle child, thank God for middle children, she got married, and lovely young woman, and she married this guy who is just barely up to her standards, but I guess we'll let him in the family. But anyway, on the, on the, on the flight back, I had, it's a long flight, about three hours, and I had the, this is in Jacksonville, Florida, and about three hours back to Denver, had the opportunity to think about where I was just at in Florida, in Jacksonville. And I thought, well, what are the, what are the things? How do you compare Florida and Colorado? And we both have sunshine. We both, Florida and Colorado, have skiing, only they ski on water. We, they have hurricanes, we have wildfires. We have mountains, they have beaches. We have much better water, but they have better roads. We have better, older drivers, but they have better seafood, and the housing is a little more affordable. But as, as the plane touched down here in Denver, it just occurred to me that there is no place like home.
All right. Counselor, how did the dance floors compare Colorado to Florida?
I understand there may be a picture of two of me on the dance floor, making a fool of myself.
I'm sure you were cutting a very handsome rug. Additional, additional elected officials matters. Well, I'll close this out with sort of a nice, a nice story. I was at the Mile High Flood District Board of Directors that I've been sitting on. The board voted to approve the purchase of a piece of property in Wheat Ridge, about five, a little over five acres on 41st and Kipling. It's, it's one house that's occupied and several, several older homes that are, that are no longer occupied, but they're in the flood, in the flood plain, in the floodway, and, and the district will be moving forward to conclude a purchase with the, with the buyer there, and reverting that property to Wheat Ridge. So we hope to have some really nice, it's, it's nice land down on the, down on the river. And, and once again, I think in addition to our Clear Creek, which is a, certainly a focal point in our community that has a lot of, a lot of room left to grow. So just very, very appreciate the Flood District taking that on and with our staff, working with them to make that, that increases the safety of our community and is better all the way around. So we will be here one week from tonight in a, in a regular meeting. We have, we have a public hearing, at least one, on the books, so we'll have a lot of, a lot of things to do. So between now and then, thank you all for being here, and we will stand adjourned.